Hey, everybody. The March 14th, 2024 City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is now called to order. We will begin by receiving communication from the public. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible actions. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak at this time? No? Next is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless the commissioner so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item A: Consider approving the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting held on February 22nd, 2024. Do we have a motion?
I move.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, all in favor? Motion passes? Okay. Item B, or, sorry about that. Next on our agenda are action items. According to Planning and Zoning Rules of Procedure, all actions of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of a simple majority of the commissioners present at such commission meetings. Item A is a zone change request for the property at 2600 South Friendswood Drive from SFR to CSC. Item I: Conduct a public hearing regarding a request for a zone classification change located at 2600 South Friendswood Drive, 4.8476 acres of land out of lots 64 and 65 of Sloan subdivision, out of the John Dickinson League, according to map or plat recorded in volume 254-A, page 6, and transferred to plat record 3, map number 61A. Both of the map records of Galveston County, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, to change from single-family residential SFR to community shopping center CSC, and amendment to the future land use map to change the property from low-density residential to retail. Aubrey, Becky, do you have the staff presentation?
Yes, sir. Just a little bit of other explanation. The tract is almost five acres. It does front FM 518 or South Friendswood Drive. The request is to change to community shopping center. There is a planned development, but just this is a straight rezoning, so no site plans or anything are being considered at this time. Any use that is allowed in the CSC zoning district would be an allowed use on the property. It would also be subject to the community overlay district, since 518 is one of our major thoroughfares, so additional landscaping and screening requirements would apply. The property, like I said, it does front 518. The future land use map, I think this one was a bit of a discussion topic for the commission, and when we were last adopting the future land use map, we didn't quite know which way to go on this one. So, we left it low-density residential. So, if approval of this will include the amendment to the future land use map as well. The property, if you're looking at the map to the left, is zoned CSC, and that's planned for West Ranch, their village town center. That will require, you know, a site plan and all that when that is developed, but that was part of the original West Ranch development that began back in 2004. To the right of the property, there is a significant drainage ditch, and the back of the property backs up to the detention ponds for West Ranch. Plating will be required. There is water and sewer available to the property, and then sidewalks and driveways will require text dot permits for those improvements.
Thank you, Aubrey. Would the applicant like to speak? Okay. Would anybody from the public like to comment in support of this proposed change? Would anyone from the public like to comment against the proposed change? No? If you can come up and introduce yourself.
Yes, my name's Shane Hudson, and, you know, when I saw this entry in the agenda for today, I had some concerns. You know, because of the west, it was at the Ranch Express convenience store that's near Centennial Park. I thought that kind of set a bad precedent, and I don't think many of us really want more of that with the big giant bright lights, and they kind of shoehorned that in into the lot. So, when I saw this on the record for today, I thought, okay, this is another small lot, so developers maybe will try to shove something in there, and maybe wouldn't be subject to the reuse, like you mentioned, for the rest of the village. I don't know if Ginger's here today. Ginger, okay. Yeah, so, you know, so I posted a comment on Facebook, and Ginger replied, "I'm very grateful you did. I'm glad you did. I had a daughter that got married about a year ago." So, my understanding from what Ginger posted is she described her plan as to put a wedding venue, a nice wedding venue. I think that could be a great thing for Friendswood. I really do. I don't really think many of us want another convenience store, at least not designed like the Ranch Express. So, I guess really, I don't have any real major concern even. I guess the only concern I would have is, you know, if five years from now, you decide you don't want to run that place anymore, and then you sell it to somebody else, and then we get Ranch Express too. I guess that would really be my only concern. And I don't know if you guys have a mechanism to prevent that kind of thing from happening. I got to think that probably, if you do reclassify this as commercial, any subsequent owner would also inherit that zoning, right? So, I guess that's most all I wanted to say. You know, there's ways to do development. I'm not saying I'm opposed to any development. That's not what I'm saying. There are ways to do it in a more tasteful way, and what Ginger's described seems to be exactly that. It seems to be a very nice thing. So, I just wanted to come and share these comments. I think that pretty well covers all I had to say.
We appreciate your time.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm a resident of West Ranch. My house is really close to this property, and I don't want to have a big nuclear reactor in my backyard, but that's what really motivated me. I've only posted three times to Facebook my entire life. Right? And every time I go by the Ranch Express at night, and practically need my sunglasses to drive by there at 10 o'clock at night, you know, it's kind of important to me. So, anyhow, I just wanted to make those comments, so.
We appreciate your time, sir. Thank you. Okay, next, consider making a recommendation to city council regarding a request for a zone change, classification change located at 2600 South Friendswood Drive, 4.8476 acres of land out of lots 64 and 65 of Sloan subdivision, out of the John Dickinson League, according to the map or plat recorded in volume 254-A, page 6, and transferred to plat record 3, map number 61A. Both of the map records of Galveston County, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, to change from single-family residential SFR to community shopping center CSC, and amendment to future land use map to change the property from low-density residential to retail. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Aubrey, Becky, any additional information you want to share?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, we'll start discussion with Commissioner Rice.
I think this property, no matter what we do, eventually will be rezoned commercial, just given its location and the adjacency to West Ranch. I've heard what you want to do there with the wedding venue, and I think, even with that aside, I think it still going to end up being commercial. So, to jump on this and allow something different that we do allow now, the event center or wedding venue, hopefully that will nip in the bud any other strip center that somebody else might want to put there at a later date. I think it's a good buffer between West Ranch and Rancho Viejo, in addition to the 50-foot or so drainage isn't at its next door, so I'm for it.
Okay. Commissioner Anderson?
Everything I've seen looks very supportive of the area development side.
Commissioner Bounce?
My only concern is, I kind of agree with the gentleman about worrying about spotlight effect that it might cause, but otherwise, no, I don't have any problem with it.
Okay. Commissioner Conrad?
I believe that, just like Marcus was just saying, that this property will become commercial regardless of what we do. And what we're trying to do here is trying to decide if we want this to be residential or commercial. And I agree.
Okay. For me, it's on 528, the neighboring property is commercial, or, yeah, 518, and the neighboring property is already commercial. You have a buffer between that and the residential next door. So, for me, I really have no issue with it. Just to be clear, though, we're not, there's comments of a wedding venue. That's not what we're discussing on this particular subject, okay? Okay, with that, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor? Motion passes?
So, and just for clarification, our action tonight is a recommendation to city council, so their public hearing and action on this item will be on Monday, April 1st.
Thank you for having that. Okay. Item B: Consider approving an amendment to the Georgetown subdivision master plan. Do we have a motion?
I so move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Rice?
Marsha, second.
Marsha? Aubrey, Becky, any additional information?
So, this is a revision. We, this master plan came before us before, but it has changed. They've subtracted, excuse me, some of the lots to the proximity of the gun range that's located directly on the map, just north of their detention ponds. They were originally proposing lots south of the gun range, so they've changed their development plan to where the detention pond is in that location, and then south of where the boulevard was going to be extended, basically it's just vacant land at this point. So, it's down to 312 lots. It'll still have the two entrances, one coming in from the city of Alvin, and then the secondary entrance coming in through city of Friendswood, like right inside our city limits. And I believe it's like 97 lots on the Alvin side, somewhere in that range. But all of the lots are in Friendswood. There is none that cross the city, the school district lines, so it should be a pretty clean development. And they'll be bringing the preliminary and final plats. The detention pond is under construction at this time.
Okay. Would the applicant like to add any additional information?
Do you have any questions?
Okay. We'll move on to discussion. Commissioner Bounce?
No, sir, not at this time.
Commissioner Rice? Or, I'm sorry, Commissioner Conrad?
No, I don't have anything.
Mr. Rice?
I have questions. Aubrey's coming. What, what's, are there any major differences between this and the previous?
Mainly, like I said, the relocation of the detention pond and the reduction in the number of lots.
But not to the streets or anything?
The original boulevard that was planned was a divided boulevard with a median down the middle, and I think just due to the number, the lot yield now, they've cut back on some of the costs, so it's just going to be an 80-foot right-of-way, so not a median.
And so, would the city or any of the fire department or police department or anybody have any issues with that second entrance on the Alvin side being in phase five rather than phase one or two?
No, all their phasing will have to meet the distance requirements for access for collectors and major thoroughfares and all that, so their phasing plan meets the requirements.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson?
No questions.
Commissioner Rice just hit on it a little bit, but, so we're just reducing the number of lots is the biggest thing? Lot sizes are all still within compliance and all that?
Yes.
Okay. No other issues? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor? Motion passes? Item C: Consider approving a site plan for Friendswood Scoop Shop to be located at 901 South Friendswood Drive. Do we have a motion?
Motion to discuss.
Mr. Rice, motion to discuss. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Bounce? Aubrey, Becky, additional comments?
Yes, so this is a proposal for the Friendswood Scoop Shop to be located across the street here from City Hall at the corner of West Castlewood and 518. It's the existing Glynn's House. It's a historical house here in Friendswood. So, the new owner is proposing an ice cream parlor and retail shop. The improvements to the property will provide parking, and it also includes an alternate landscape plan for the commission's consideration tonight. There were a few clarifications that we put on the plans, just staff notes. The monument sign was shown, like, across the property line. Separate permits are required for the signage, so it's not final approval, but monument signs have to be three feet off the property line. And then there was just some labeling. The landscape buffer along West Castlewood was, it was shown, but it was just in the wrong place. There is some right-of-way along the side property line, it's a little bit confusing. And then the required landscape parkway across the front, across South Friendswood Drive, should be 15 feet instead of the 10 feet that was shown. But those are not, I mean, conceptually, it meets the requirements. So, the alternate landscape plan, so assuming the site had no trees, the new landscaping requirements would have required 16 2-inch trees and seven 4-inch trees, for a total of 23 trees and 60 caliper inches. The owner would like to keep all the existing trees on the property, so the three largest trees on the property equal 106 caliper inches, which already exceeds the minimum requirement for new trees. So, she's just asking to maintain the existing trees on the property. She's planning the parking driveway access around the trees in order to maintain them. And it's within the commission's purview to approve an alternate landscape plan in downtown district.
Just to clarify, if this changes to a motion to approve, do we have to do, does it have to be approved with the, with your markups?
With the, yeah, well, you can do with staff comments and to approve the alternate landscape plan. Yes, sir.
Perfect. Okay, would the applicant like to present any information? We'll start with Commissioner Rice.
Excuse me. I started off with a bunch of questions, but most of them have been answered. My only real comment would be, I would like to see some trees still planted on the 518 side, the Friendswood Drive side, just for the continuity that we seem to have down Friendswood Drive. There, you don't necessarily have to put it in the landscape buffer, that first 15 feet. You've got a nice yard of, what, 50 feet or so, so even pulled back, but I'd just like to see some more greenery trees in front. That's my personal preference. That's all.
Okay. Commissioner Bounce?
No, sir. No questions.
Commissioner Anderson?
No questions.
Commissioner Conrad?
I'm excited to see this project. The house has been sitting there a while, and the landscaping looks good to me. I'm excited about it.
Okay. I will say, I also like the idea of the project. I think it'll be good and definitely an improvement to the property. I also would like to see something in the front as far as a tree or something, but it's nothing I'm going to hold it up for. So, just something to think about. You can come up and introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Katie Chandler. So, I guess because of the power lines, as well as we do have, like, the magnolia in the front, a palm tree, and then our parking is going to be kind of like towards the front on, like, the left-facing to 518 side. So, we don't really have, like, space to put a tree in there, because we need 25 feet for it to be able to grow. I did get three trees from Arbor Day, so I am planning to plant trees. Like, I love trees, obviously, that's why I'm planning on keeping all of them. So, if I'm able to put in a tree, I will. So, I don't know as far as, like, requirements, if I need to apply or show, like, at some point where the tree will be. I just don't know if there's space in the front.
I don't believe that would.
It depends on their motion. I mean, if they motion to approve your alternate plan, then anything that you do, you know, would be over and above. But if they motion to require, you know, two 4-inch trees at the front, then we'll need to include that on the plans, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Perfect, thank you for your time.
Just one clarif, the, just as far as the benches, lights, and sidewalks for this project, Text Dot has completed the sidewalk project, so the sidewalk is complete in front of this property. And then the lighting, she'll actually have one of our new lights in front of her property as well, along with the guy wire and the, it's, there's a lot going on in the front of property, so. But, and she's also proposing two of the benches that will be along Friendswood Drive.
Okay. Very good. So, since there's a motion discussed, we?
We'll need a motion to approve and then whatever conditions.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Motion to?
To approve.
With staff comments and a?
That's what it is. The way it is.
Approving the alternate landscape plan?
Yes.
With staff comments?
With staff comments, yes.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Conrad? Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor? Motion passes? All right, next on our agenda is communications. Item A: Discuss a recommendation from the ad hoc parking subcommittee regarding parking. Commissioner Rice?
I don't know really where this talk, I've never done this before. So, little history, council put together an ad hoc subcommittee for looking at the parking around Friendswood, just to see if we needed to make any changes, and if so, what. We've, we started by looking at what our existing codes and ordinances are for parking requirements. We, we all separately toured the city and, you know, tried to pay more attention to what our parking lots look like. Later, we had a couple of interviews with other cities. Round Rock was one, Sugar Land. Some of us went on a fact-finding mission to Conroe and just talked to those guys, city planners and whatnot, about what their issues are with parking, how did they resolve these issues. A lot of what we saw was that Friendswood's very unique in that we have a state road that goes right through the middle of town rather than just the town square. So, trying to encourage walkability in Friendswood is a wholly different animal than anywhere else we looked at. That, that, that added to our list of what we were trying to look for and look at with parking. How do we make it more walkable with that in mind? So, to skip to the end, our recommendation as a committee is really kind of four-pronged. First is to reduce all the parking across all requirements in the city to reduce it by 20%. We thought that was a reasonable number that wasn't too high, but still gave some flexibility, given that most parking lots in Friendswood, with the exception of the library and HEB, have plenty to spare, at least in our opinion. Promote some parking alternatives and accommodations, giving Aubrey and Becky some leeway to make recommendations, maybe reduce some parking or suggestions on how to accommodate more. We would like to incentivize redevelopment of the larger parking lots like Captain's Corner. If we reduce that parking by 20%, now we've got a green space that can be used as a pocket park or some other development. If you try to develop it with another building, you still have to go back and meet the parking requirements, so we feel like it's a good way to gain some green space and not overpark or overbuild concrete with no cars. And then the final, and maybe the most important aspect of this, would be to review this every 20 more, 24 months to make sure we're not making a mistake, or it worked out so well, maybe we go more, whatever the case may be. So, we didn't want to just make recommendations and leave it alone. We wanted somebody to take a look at it again in a couple of years and see, all right, how's this panning out? So, what we're asking for is for P&amp;Z to give some feedback, and then we would present it to city council, hopefully at the April 1st meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, the 20%, how is that determined? Was it just based on talking to people at these other locations?
Sort of. Yes. We, we felt like parking could be reduced, but we didn't have a specific number we were looking for or looking at, and we just kind of came to 20% as something that's palatable to everybody, but not too drastic.
Does this affect, is this just new construction? Is it retroactive if people have something existing?
We would like to see it retroactive, so that something could be done, like at Captain's Corner.
Part of their proposals for redevelopment of lots. So, as you mentioned, like Captain's Corner, allowing them a 20% reduction, which could be developed into a variety of items, right? The one thing I'll say is, you mentioned a lot of interviews. I was on the committee also, so, but I didn't get to participate as much as I would have liked to, but there were some very interesting perspectives from the other cities, as far as some cities have multiple downtown areas essentially, parking garages.
On-street parking.
The little, the little mini park areas in front of businesses, right? So, there's a lot of different things that could be done with that 20% parking space. Any other commissioners, comments?
I'm going to play a little devil's advocate here. If, if you take 20% off a parking lot and then you put in a pocket park, people go to park there, so there's less parking for the business, correct?
Correct. Assuming they're both used at the same time.
Yes, assuming they're both used at the same time.
And that's something else we found, that a lot of the parking lots are empty because there's restaurants using them at night and businesses in the morning, and neither one of them need that much parking at any one time. And most of these don't, don't overlap maybe for half an hour, if that.
Okay, just.
So, I just want to throw it out.
You know, Marcus, I, I don't know if you got to that level on this, but I remember one of the city presentations, they did a pretty detailed survey of parking lot usage. Did we ever get to that?
We did not, and we weren't, we were just trying to give more of a bird's eye view, see if that's anywhere council wants to go later.
I think in addition to the pocket parks, another idea was like, you know, freestanding coffee shop or? or like just some, like a freestanding drive-through-only business that, you know, doesn't take up a lot of space, but, you know, brings traffic to a parking lot or, yeah. That we just felt like we have a little bit of room for some things like that, to add some character.
Exactly.
I'd like to thank the subcommittee for taking this on. It's, it's definitely something worth looking at, but it takes a lot to figure all those different nuances out to get it to a point.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be a much bigger task to go back and redo, redo everything. So we felt like it was a much more palatable scenario to do what we're doing and maybe ease into it a little bit.
There's a trend across the United States and in Texas of people just doing away with their minimum parking requirements. We saw a lot of that.
Yeah.
But those cities have parking garages, they have on-street parking, they've got, you know, walkable, you know, areas with neighborhoods or, you know, with parking areas. And we just don't have that yet. So I think just the reduction, you know, allows some flexibility, but not throwing the baby out with the bathwater yet.
Playing it safe.
Yeah.
And Friendswood is very unique in which we cannot park on the street on five eighteen.
Right.
Correct.
You know, and so we just have to find other ways.
And just one last clarification from me. This, this is a citywide, right, not just downtown district?
It is citywide.
Any other comments? Questions?
Are we asking for a recommendation?
Not tonight. It's just discussion. We can, it, actually, we'll just do a discussion with city council and get their feedback, and then we'll bring it back to the commission for a rec. The parking criteria is in the design criteria manual, which is actually managed by engineering and adopted by resolution. So whatever changes we formulate, we'll forward to them and to incorporate in their next review.
Okay. Item B, receive an update regarding, regarding the zoning board of adjustments, twenty-twenty-three annual report. Aubrey?
Yes, sir. So each year, all the boards and committees give annual reports to city council. And just as a matter of information for the zoning board of adjustment activity, they had zero meetings last year. So it means that our zoning ordinance is working. It's a, they're, with, our history with them is pretty, in twenty-twenty-two, we had two cases. In twenty-twenty-one, we had two. Twenty-twenty was six, which I don't remember what the big hiccup there was. Twenty-eighteen, we had nine, but that was post Harvey. When we have a lot of cases like that, we review, they're usually repetitive cases, and we review the ordinance and make changes to accommodate those significant issues. So zero meetings with ZBOA is a good thing.
Okay. Next, item C, receive an update regarding the planning and zoning twenty-twenty-three annual report provided to city council on March fourth, twenty-twenty-four. So I gave a, a presentation the last city council meeting. So we, just a brief summary, we had sixteen meetings last year, which was down from the prior year, what, twenty-two the prior year, I think? So we were down slightly. We did have two preliminary plats and one extension approved. Five final plats, replats, and one extension. Five commercial site plans and five amendments extensions. Seven zone change recommendations and two ordinance, two ordinances and zero resolution recommendations. So it was a, it was a pretty good year. We also had our annual review. We recommended to city council to amend appendix A of the sign ordinance. I know a lot of you put some effort into that. We had the APA Texas Conference, which we had two commissioners attend, and then our annual retreat. Other than that, it was just a quick presentation of what we've achieved in twenty-twenty-three and what we plan in twenty-twenty-four. So, any questions? Okay. Item D, the next planning and zoning commission regular meetings are scheduled for Thursday, March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, and Thursday, April eleventh, twenty-twenty-four. Item E, receive the February twenty-twenty-four DRC report. That's in your backup material. Aubrey, anything to mention there?
No, sir.
Okay. Item F, receive council liaison updates concerning the action taken by the city council on P and Z related items. Councilmember Matranga?
Well, good evening. We have both of us here tonight, both your primary and your alternate. Both interesting topics that you had to take on tonight. Really, the only thing I really had to mention that came up in the council meeting was your annual report was well-done. I know firsthand how much work goes on behind the scenes, going out and visiting sites, considering all these things, reviewing drawings. So I know you hear it all the time, but sincerely mean, and want to convey that thanks for all the work that y'all do behind the scenes, that a lot of people in Friendswood don't, don't necessarily know unless they're going to build an ice cream shop and then they start learning some more of the details, but, or an event center. So thank you so much for what you do and the, the service that you provide, the citizens in Friendswood kind of thinking about these things, going out and doing all the homework, and then coming here, meeting twice a month. So that keeps the developers moving, keeping, you know, communication flowing. So luckily, city council only meets once a month, but nobody's waiting on us. They're definitely waiting on you guys to get moving, so thank you. That was really all I had.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Hanks, would you like to?
No, he said, I'm ready.
Okay. Next, we'll start with Commissioner Anderson. You have any comments?
Just want to thank you for allowing me to continue to catch up on how things are going, so appreciate it.
Very good. Commissioner Bounce?
Again, like to thank our support team. They're always, bring things right up and have it ready to go for us. We really appreciate that. Appreciate city council coming and showing up and helping us out. And again, thank you for the report.
Commissioner Conrad? Commissioner Rose? Okay. Already covered the annual report. But going off what Joe said, I mean, a lot of that, most of that information is put together by these, the support staff we have here. So thank you. We appreciate everything. With that, Aubrey, you have anything? Becky? Karen? Okay. With that, thank you everyone for attending this evening. And the March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four planning and zoning regular meeting is now adjourned.